Just start whenever? Well, it's not seven yet.
It's 7:01.
Oh, our computer is slow. All right, that's a complaint. Call to order of the meeting of the Verona Common Council at 7:02 PM for July 22, 2019. I will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the roll.
Alderperson Cronin, present.
Alderperson Gaskell, here.
Alderperson Journey, here.
Alderperson Kemp, here.
Alderperson Cole, here.
Alderperson Posey, here.
Alderpersons Ricky and Touche are absent and excused.
Thank you, we have a quorum. Next, we'll move on to item four, which is public comments. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. All right, I'm not seeing anyone run up to the microphone, so we'll move on to item five, which is approve the minutes from the July 8, 2019 Common Council meeting. Questions, comments, motions?
Move approval.
Motion by Alder Coles, there, second.
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the July 8, 2019 Common Council meeting say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The minutes are approved. Item six is mayor's business? I don't have any. Item seven, announcements. Any announcements from the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, Administrator's Report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you, I did not have a report in the packet. I was on vacation, so I could not complete that report. Couple updates though tonight, is we do have Fireman's Park ribbon cutting on July 31st at 3:00 PM. Just real quickly, just a brief show of hands, is anyone planning on attending that?
What's the date?
The July 31st is a Wednesday?
Maybe.
And I'm just asking for possibly posting a notice of quorum. Ellen, we might want to just do that to be safe, okay? So, you don't need RSVP, I was just curious on that. We do have some active public hearings out there right now. We have a public hearing at 118 South Main Street for facade changes, that's the old world of Variety Building. We have a conditional use permit public hearing for a sign for the school district that would be located on West Verona Avenue. We also currently have a public hearing with the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, that's for our urban service area amendment, and that public hearing will be held August 8th at 7:00 PM at the City-County Building in downtown Madison. We have a personnel meeting is coming Wednesday at 7:30 AM at City Hall. At that meeting, we'll be talking about changes to our tuition reimbursement policy for city employees. We have a border review meeting, this is the last time I'll have to say this, we have a border review meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM. If you cannot make it, let Ellen know as soon as possible, because we've got to make sure we have enough people to have that meeting. And then finally, just a reminder, we have a staff picnic this Wednesday? Thursday? Sorry, this Thursday, from 11:30 to 1 o'clock. If you guys can make it, great, if you can help, even better, but if you can make it and show up and just say hi to staff, we'd appreciate that. And that's all I have tonight, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions on the Administrator's Report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Engineer's Report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the well 6 pumping station construction, the well alignment and piping for well 6 has been approved. The contractor is installing air piping to continue the well development. Drainage improvements have been made downstream of the well site to accommodate the discharge water from the well development. For the Verona area high school, AE Common City staff are completing the final reviews for the project plans and specifications. This would be for the public roadway improvements portion of the project. We issued a permit on Friday for the contract, or for the project to begin construction. They'll be starting on erosion control items and doing some of the masquerading for West Verona Avenue to start, and we will be permitting the rest of the project as it gets approved. That is slated to start, was slated to start today, so you'll start to see them out there. For the County Highway M reconstruction project, the contractors completed the sanitary sewer testing for the city of Verona work. The contractor continues to move forward with the water main installation for the city. There's approximately 1,300 feet of water main left to install, including four hydrants and two connections to existing water main within the city distribution system. For County Highway M Liberty Drive, Thousand Oaks Trail traffic signals, the project is substantially complete and the contractor is working through the punch list, which are the final cleanup items for the project. For the 2019 Streets Rehabilitation Project, the contractor had submitted one side of the street with new curb and gutter, the opposite side, oh sorry, had completed one side of the street with new curb and gutter. The opposite side of the street should be completed by the end of the week of July 15 through 19th, so the end of last week. Work on this project is on schedule to be completed by the first week of August. And finally, for the County Highway PD Woods Road to County Highway M project, contractors have been sent out for signature to the contractor and the city staff is working on a schedule. A pre-construction conference will be scheduled for early to mid-August, and a public information meeting will be scheduled for mid-August. Construction is anticipated to begin in early September. So with that, I can take any questions?
Any questions on the Engineer's Report? Seeing none? Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 10, which is committee reports. 10A Finance Committee, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to start by making a motion for the payment of the bills in the amount of $1,985,164.89.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin, Alder Kemp.
For the sake of discussion, there's quite a few things here this week to pay. First, we have to pay $254,443.61 for the Liberty Traffic Signal in Tiff 6. We have our EMS payment, that's $234,910.46. We also have our Madison Metro, our share of the payment for that, which is $293,817.7. We also have the transit bill that we have to pay, which we actually get back through Epic through a grant, that's $111,000, excuse me, $111,032.0. And finally, the larger item, of course, everyone's been enjoying all of the construction on County Highway M. We have to pay $685,901.61.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Kemp?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10B Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Cole?
Thank you. Start with item 10B1. I would like to make a motion to approve an application for a combination Class B fermented malt beverage and reserve Class B intoxicating liquor license for Sangüio LLC doing business as El Charro Mexican Grill, 958 Liberty Drive, Suite 106, Monica Griselda Cover Rubias Lopez agent.
Motion by Alder Coles, there, second.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Cole?
I think Ms. Clark has...
Are there any questions from the council regarding this application?
Just making sure that Chief Coughlin's looked through this, they've got certificates of insurance and everything.
They have everything we have, we have a lease. Would any of you like to step up to the podium and just give them a little bit of an idea what you'll be doing there?
And if you could give your name and address.
I'm Olegario Rodriguez, I'm the business consultant accountant for Mr. Ruben Ramirez. He's the owner of El Charro Mexican Grill. So, we have the lease, like she stated, all the information they requested. Right now, we had submitted one operator's license, Ms. Ellen had mentioned we should apply for more, so we did. We just finished two more certificates, two more employees, and we have like three more working on their classes, doing the training, so we will have two more applications submitted tomorrow, and then we have probably another three or four more coming on the pipeline for the next week or so. But, we're excited to open there, we're looking towards the middle of August, and yeah, I don't know if you have any questions you would like us to address, anything?
Any questions for the applicant?
Okay, very good, thank you so much.
If I could add that they've been great to work with, if I asked for something, they had it for me there right away, and Chief Coughlin had no problem at all with approving the license, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you have a question?
I was just going to say I'm looking forward to coming over and trying everything out, so it's good to have new restaurants around, so. Excellent.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving an application for a combination Class B fermented malt beverage and reserve Class B intoxicating liquor license for Sangüio LLC doing business as El Charro Mexican Grill, 958 Liberty Drive, Suite 106, Monica Griselda Cover Rubias Lopez as the agent, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Thank you, and good luck to the applicant. Next, we'll move on to item 11, which is old business. Just to clarify, we have a series of closed session items. Mr. Sayer, could we make three separate motions and then just go into closed session as one thing, or should we do these?
I would advise three separate motions, then go into closed session as a whole for the package, and I can provide some brief updates on all three of them if you'd like.
Yeah, if you could do that.
Sure. So the first one, which is old business, item A, which is city administrator recruitment, city staff continues to work on the city administrator recruitment and is requesting a closed session with the common council to discuss the recruitment and to provide an update to the common council. Old business, item number B, which is the interim city administrator agreement extension. The interim city administrator agreement expires on July 31st. The city will not have a permanent city administrator hired by July 31st, and the agreement needs to be extended, and city staff once again is requesting a closed session discussion with the common council to discuss a potential extension of that agreement. And then finally, the last item we have is new business, item A, which is a fire chief retirement agreement. Staff is requesting a closed session discussion with the council to discuss a retirement agreement with the fire chief.
Any questions or comments to make an open session? Mr. Sayer?
I do anticipate some possible discussion, at least on old business item B and possibly new business item A in open session after the closed session discussion with the council, so it could be a potential, you know, announcement or just, you know, information on those two items.
Okay. Makes sense. With that, three separate motions to go into closed session would be in order. We could draw straws.
Yeah. I will make a motion to move into closed session for discussion and possible action regarding city administrator recruitment. The common council may convene in closed session for discussion and possible action regarding city administrator recruitment as authorized by section 19.85, prun 1, prun C of the Wisconsin statutes, consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter disclosed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Cronin, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. This is, of course, a roll call vote.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Okay, a motion to go into closed session on 11B would be in order. Alder Kemp?
I want to make a motion regarding the interim city administrator agreement extension. The common council may convene in a closed session for a discussion and possible action regarding an extension of the interim city administrator agreement as authorized by section 19.85, prun 1, prun C of the Wisconsin statutes, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Posey, I think. This is a roll call vote.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
I don't get an aye?
I'm sorry, Alder Cronin.
Aye.
All right, regarding 12A, which is the fire chief retirement agreement, a motion to go in closed session for that would be in order.
I'll do it. Alder Posey's got it.
Alder Posey.
Move to move into closed session, the common council may convene in a closed session for discussion and possible action regarding a fire chief retirement agreement as authorized by section 19.85, prun 1, prun C of the Wisconsin statutes, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Posey, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. This is, of course, a roll call vote.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
All right, and that motion passes as well. We'll be in closed session and reconvene in open session when we're done. Alright, and that motion passes as well, uh we'll be in closed session and and reconvene in open session when we're done.
Are we back on? Hopefully, okay, hopefully we're back on. We're, we'll take these in order. So 11A, the city administrator recruitment. We got an update from HR and we expect a full report on August 12th. Any other additional comments from the council on this one? Seeing none, we will move on to 11B, which is discussion and possible action regarding an interim city administrators agreement extension. Questions, comments, motions?
We'll move approval of the interim city administrator agreement for Adams here.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, I think. It might have been a tie. Anything to add, Alder Cole?
No, thank you.
We will, of course, have a copy of the agreement for the press once it's, if it's approved. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the interim city administrator agreement as discussed and as printed out signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Sayer for, for taking on double duty and sometimes even triple duty with different tasks. I think you've done a great job for the city and I appreciate your work and I imagine everyone else does as well. Next, we'll move on to item 12, new business. Discussion and possible action regarding the fire chief retirement agreement. Questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the fire chief retirement agreement.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskell. Anything to add, Alder Kemp?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take the time personally to thank Chief Giver for his service to the city of Verona. Public service and, and working as a chief is a difficult job. It's one that takes a lot of time and commitment. You have to take a lot of time away from your family and he's been a lifelong long public service. So, you know, on the behalf of the city and the council, I just wanted to thank him personally for his dedication to the city and wish him the best of luck in his retirement.
Thank you. Just to kind of build on that, I, I want to thank Chief Giver as well for his service. It's a tough and, and really important job. And I also just want to say I really, I really appreciate this, this agreement because it gives the city certainty. So, so thank you, the chief, for that. We are, as you might have noticed, going through some other recruitment and, and, and being able to plan and work really, really helps, helps the city a lot. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the fire chief retirement agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Next, we will move on to 12B, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the operator licenses.
Thank you. If I could please have a motion to approve the operator licenses as presented by the city clerk.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of approving the operator licenses signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And they are approved. Next is item 13, adjournment. Is there a mo- (laugh) Motion to adjourn by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Corin. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we are adjourned at 8:02 PM. Thank you all.